Good evening. Wait, let me turn this on. Let's start again. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 28th School Committee meeting. We are at the Middle School, High School library tonight, and we'll start by taking attendance. I am here, Mr. Conroy.
Here.
Mr. Catalano.
Present.
Ms. Gibbons.
Here.
Ms. Roach is not here. And then we have our superintendent, Mr. Mullany.
Here.
And our teacher rep, Ms. Kopeis. Kopeis. Our meetings are being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast, Channel 8, or Verizon Channel 37, as well as YouTube. All meetings are also posted on the Millis Public School website under School Committee, and all times are approximate. Let us start with the teacher rep. Do you want to call it that? Welcome.
Do you want to identify myself again?
No, no, you're excellent.
So Mrs. Diver has reported out that we are once again celebrating banned books week with a variety of activities and exposing the students to the books that have been banned. At the high school, the teachers are getting ready to celebrate homecoming with the students next week. We're excited to bring that back as a tradition. There is a half-day professional day tomorrow, so the students will be getting out early. And then the Clyde Brown will be working on, I believe, their literacy initiatives. And the high school and middle school will be working on various initiatives that we're working on as well. And that's pretty much our big ones right now. There's been a lot of sports going on, and the term, the halfway point for the high school progress report is actually a week from, that's actually next week on Thursday. So we're 5% done with the school year.
Ms. Kopeis.
Yes.
It's fair to say that we have not banned any books. This is, these are banned books in other places.
Previously banned books, yes.
Okay. We're not banning books at Millis Public Schools.
No, that would be terrible.
That's correct.
They're pointing out the books that have been banned in the ridiculousness of the banage.
I completely support.
There's a whole cart over there if you'd like to read them of the previously banned books in other places.
So clearly, if they're here, they're not banned, so that's a good thing.
No, we have, I don't think we, I don't believe you've banned any books, have you all?
No.
I don't think so.
Mark has tried, but we've.
Yeah, that seems like.
Okay.
So we're just moving along, and as I said last time, we're just happy to be here. You know, the students have been great. They have been very adherent to all of the requests that are made, and honestly, I think they're just happy to have their sports back, to have teachers back, and we're just grateful for that privilege.
That's a good thing.
So that's all I have for tonight.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jada, I forgot to ask you if anyone signed in for open session. All right, so let's move on to our action items. Consideration to approve the school committee meeting minutes from the 14th of September.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to approve the Millis Public School's school committee meeting minutes from 9:14, 2021.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Consideration to approve the creation of accepts capital reserve.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion to approve the creation of accepts capital reserve with a balance limit of $1 million for the purpose of accumulating funds for the acquisition, maintenance, and improvement of capital items.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Consideration to approve an out-of-state trip to Providence. Madam Chair. Ms. Gibbons.
I make a motion to approve an out-of-state trip for the Chorus Department to go to the Dunkin' Donuts Center in Providence, Rhode Island, to sing at events there on October 16th, '21, and November 12th, '21.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the discussion? Did you want to say something, or you're waiting for the next thing? Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Consideration for a 20-year lease agreement for the Solar Energy Development.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion that the Millis School Committee authorize the Director of Finance and Human Resources to sign a 20-year lease agreement with Select Energy Development, LLC.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we did all the teacher rep stuff. Do you want to skip down to the time on running?
Sure. Great. I think Joe Buckway is with Mass Association of School Superintendents, and he's involved in their new superintendents induction program and is working with me this year as I enter my first full year as a superintendency. And I've had the opportunity to meet with Joe on a number of occasions since July, and so Joe can kind of explain the program and some of its outcomes.
That might last him a week. It's on.
Okay, thank you, and it's good to be here to describe a little bit about the new superintendents induction program, also known as NISIP. NISIP is a three-year program for new superintendents, and each year we focus on different things. The initial year is a, is an important year because it starts off with an emphasis on entry work, which Bob will be meeting with a lot of people, having conversations about the strengths of Millis Public Schools, as well as challenges that you are facing, and directions you want to move in in the future. Based upon the entry plan, which I think he's already sent to you folks, which will be talked about later tonight, is basically a plan how he goes about getting the information he will collect, and eventually develop a report of what is called a report of entry findings, which is all the findings that he will put together with his leadership team and report out to the committee, and that will occur sometime after the New Year, January. So, and that becomes the foundation of a strategy, a strategic plan, that will go out three to five years and serve as a north star, if you will, for the Millis Public Schools over the next few years to five years. And it'll have a series of, it'll, there'll be a vision, there'll be a theory of action, there'll be a mission statement, the core values, the major objectives that Bob and his leadership team will put together, and they become the guidance for the work in successive years. I should point out that the major emphasis of the NISIP program is to emphasize with new superintendents what we believe is the most important work they do. And we do a lot of emphasizing this, and that is to improve the quality of instruction that occurs in classrooms. And with that, we emphasize the importance, as much as possible, that new superintendents spend as much time as they can in schools, visiting classrooms, and talking about what good quality instruction looks like. I'll be accompanying Bob in doing some of those visits, and you'll talk about what we see with the building principal. The three of us will have a conversation afterward. Part of my job in that conversation is to participate in a minor way, but observe the interaction, the conversation between Bob and the principal of the school that we're visiting, and then I'll give Bob some feedback as to what I see and observe. The nuts and bolts of the program. First year, I will come to Millis and meet with Bob, six hours a month, one-on-one coaching. And some of the school visits that I just mentioned will occur during that time. Other times, we'll talk about issues that are taking place, or directives that he has tried to pursue. In addition to those six hours each month, there are eight content sessions. Prior to the pandemic, we used to meet in person for eight day-long meetings, and there'd be a curriculum, there's a content, opportunities to practice skill development. And since the pandemic, like last year, we met, everything was remote on Zoom, and this year, we're doing a hybrid. We're having in-person as well as remote. And to date, we've had one all-day session and a couple of remote sessions. Generally, if it's an in-person, all-day session, it's a full day. It's a six-hour day. All the, all the new superintendents from the Commonwealth attend, and we have different activities focusing on different skill development and different learnings. When we meet remotely, we break it up and go three sessions, two hours each, one to three in the afternoon. So the strategy, as I mentioned, is completed hopefully late in the spring, early summer, and that outlines the major goals and objectives for the ensuing years. It's a living document, it's a living strategy, because it'll probably be modified and amended over time. That's what makes it a little bit different from hiring a consultant to come in and build a monthly, multiple-year strategic plan. He's here, she's here, develop the plan, and it becomes somewhat fixed because he's onto different things. The key architects of the strategy, the superintendent, his staff, and his leadership team, and the conversations they have about the Millis Public Schools and the directions that they want to pursue. Year two is similar in that we still continue the one-on-one coaching in the content sessions. It generally drops down from six hours a month to four hours a month, and instead of eight sessions in year two, it's dropped down to six sessions. So there's a gradual reduction in that time. And the emphasis in year two is on the implementation of the strategy that was developed in year one, as well as an assessment plan, how to track what you say you are going to do in the strategy that you developed. So it's important to track what the outcomes and the outputs that you established and identified in the strategy, so that you have an ongoing assessment of where you stand. Year three, the final year of the program, again, it's, the number of content days shrinks down to four, and the one-on-one coaching is no longer in place, but substituting that is what we call regional consultancy. And we'll identify in year three probably a half a dozen, possibly seven, other superintendents. If it's in-person, they'll be identified geographically for meeting purposes. If we're still in the pandemic and we're meeting remotely, at least in part, then geography doesn't really mean that much. So that's going to be a little up in the ears to identify how we're going to do that for year three in this group. But typically, if the pandemic's not a concern, we meet in person, as I mentioned, probably half a dozen people, and it becomes a support group for the six superintendents, and they bring to the meeting, a couple of them will bring what we call problems of practice or issues that they're wrestling with, and they'll put it in writing, and will follow, follow a protocol to ask a series of clarifying questions, probing questions. Then we'll have the superintendent sit back as though he's not participating, and the superintendents who are helping and guiding the superintendent with the problem will focus on what they heard, the conversations with the clarifying and probing questions. And after about eight or 10 minutes of that, the superintendent's invited to come back and participate, and we listen to what he or she has heard, and what has resonated with him or her, and how they may perceive based upon the feedback that they received at that point. It's one of the, it's one of the highlights of the program, certainly in year three, and to train superintendents to do that. In the heart of the agendas for our content sessions in year two, we spend at least an hour, if not an hour and a half out of the day, dealing with the protocol and asking superintendents to bring the problem to practice, or identify one or two superintendents to bring a problem, practice, and to practice that protocol. So that's, that's a brief description of what we do over the next three years. I want to emphasize again that the thrust of the program is to improve quality of instruction. And we think the superintendent is a key individual. We know they can't do that work alone. There are other people involved in that process, but if it's important to the superintendent, it generally becomes important to everybody else. So superintendent is key. That's, that's my ball of wax. Answer any questions you have.
Say it again. What?
I agree with Mr. Catalano about you're doing a good job.
You put that on camera, didn't you? You're doing an excellent job.
Thank you, Joe. And I just have to say, in just the short time I've known Joe, in my role of superintendent, I've already leaned on him for a wide variety of things, and he's been so helpful. It's been, it's been really. So, yeah, so, you know, Joe had mentioned my entry plan for the Millis Public Schools, and I thought I'd just give you a brief run-through, not word-for-word rendition of the document. But basically, as you all know, I've been here for 14 years, and you think in 14 years you would know everything you need to know about the district, but I found out early on when I took on the role of superintendent, there was much I didn't know. And so, you know, part of the thrust of the entry plan is to learn about particularly those areas of our, our system and our community that I didn't have a lot of experience with as principal, and I've certainly learned that the superintendency has a lot of functions that I didn't have a lot of firsthand knowledge of. So that's been part of the learning curve. As I constructed my entry plan, you know, my goals, I whittled them down to four major goals, to develop a firm understanding of the culture values and beliefs of the Millis Public Schools. Again, I had a strong sense in the high school. Middle school, I knew fairly well. Clyde Brown was, was pretty new to me, so that's part of the focus. I intend to become a visible member of the Millis community and establish relationships with some of the key community leaders and constituents, increase my understanding of programs and services of the Millis Public Schools, again, that I had little contact with as high school principal, and to utilize all that data I collected, as Joe mentioned, to develop a strategic plan that would inform district improvement plans and school improvement plans moving forward. So, you know, some of the important questions, and I won't read through them all, you know, just questions about our core values and beliefs, and how those values are represented in our programs and services. We're doing a lot of work with the new administrative staff we have this year on what exactly do we mean when we say good learning and teaching? What things do we want to make sure we keep doing? What things do we want to move away from and grow in a different area? You know, where can we streamline? And how can we support the diverse populations we now serve? As we've seen in the last few years, our demographics are changing, and we want to make sure we meet the needs of all our learners. How can we support professional learning among staff? You know, we've had, the last couple years has, you know, we've been dealing with COVID, so a lot of that time we would be doing professional learning was, was dealing with COVID issues, and that still continues to some extent today, as we know. But this year is offering us more of an opportunity to get back to the professional learning that focuses on teaching and learning and students. And, you know, how can we improve communication? Because I think that's a very important part of my role as superintendent, and certainly our role as a school district, to keep our parents and our community members informed. So those are the kinds of questions I'm, you know, I'm asking people, and I'm asking a wide range of people, ranging from, from you all to different members of the community. I've been looking at a lot of our documents on the district and school level, a lot of data from the DESE and other organizations, budgets, and, you know, different accreditation reports and things like that. I've been part of my document review. And, you know, so I've been collecting a lot of evidence to help develop this, this strategic plan moving forward. And, you know, there are a number of activities I'm doing as superintendent that help inform my work as superintendent while also providing me with data that will help me with developing that strategic plan. So, you know, those are, those are some of the areas that I'm looking to, you know, dive into as I, you know, I've been doing this. And actually, I kind of got a head start because July 1st wasn't my starting date, December 1st was of 2020, so, you know, a lot of this work I've been doing since December. Anyone have questions?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I do have a statement. When you first came on board, we all knew you, but you also had meetings with us, and I think one of the themes was communication. I think you've done an excellent job with that, from your memos, to your emails, to your phone calls. I would just continue to keep it up because that has been helpful, because most of the issues that we've had in the past has been about lack of communication or not being aware. So you are doing many things well. That is something you're doing very, very well, and it makes our working relationship better. So that's just a positive encouragement of your, your communication has been excellent.
All right. Thank you all. All right, so we're going to move into the chair report, and we're going to talk for a minute about the metrics for unmasking. So the commissioner came out with a statement yesterday or two days ago.
Monday. It seems like.
Yesterday.
Sometimes these things.
A month ago. But it was yesterday, yeah.
Right. Saying that the mask mandate is moving from October 1st and continuing through November 1st, and that the metrics are at the 80, in order to unmask in a building, 80% of the population, students?
The population of school students.
Students, staff, faculty, needs to reach 80% of vaccination rates. We had a Health and Safety Committee meeting today discussing some of this information. I don't know if you want to hop in here.
Sure. Yes. So Robin and I attended the meeting this afternoon. The nurses, school nurses, let everybody know, so they have, they've gotten, of the information they have, basically from grades seven through 12, each grade was about at the same rate of vaccination, and that, that ranged from, you know, 60 into low 70s. So.
I have the breakdown.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, Lynn was able to, Lynn Molina, the school nurse, was able to give me the breakdown as of today. Seventh grade, 69% vaccinated. Eighth grade, 63% vaccinated. Ninth grade, 63% vaccinated. Tenth grade, 69% vaccinated. Eleventh grade, 71% vaccinated. And 12th grade, 71% vaccinated.
So those are the ones that have turned in or told when?
So it's, Ms. Molina clarified, so she has, they have actually taken the extremely time-consuming process of going into the state system and looking up every student to confirm the vaccination, whether, whether parents have turned in their card or not. They've gone through and looked up every student in grade seven through 12. And so the only, and it's a, it would most likely be a small population, is, is, when we all, when people got vaccinated, probably unbeknownst to many people because you just signed forms that they put in front of you, there was a consent form that allowed for your vaccination status or your record to be put into the state system. If you did not sign that consent, your information's not in there. So if they went to look up a student, basically, three things would happen. They would see a confirmation of vaccination, a true, like, no, they're not vaccinated, or there would just be no record for the individual at all, which would indicate that there was no consent ever signed. So the percentages that Mr. Mullany indicated are actual confirmed vaccinations through the state system, and the only individuals who may be vaccinated that we don't know about are those who didn't sign a consent form. So, you know, it's not a big number. So we are.
Well below 80%.
Well below 80. There is a compounding issue that we, Bob has, has reached out to DESI, and we don't know the answer to yet. But the language in the state policy now says it is by building. Well, this building has a sixth grade in it. Sixth grade is, as of yet, still ineligible. So, you know, this committee had discussions when we actually took our first vote, which was ahead of DESI's mandate. We had discussions about whether or not we would consider the high school and the middle school differently because they don't have much interaction. There's some, but it's, it's minimal. And then we had further discussions of, were we going to be able to split sixth grade from seventh and eighth because they weren't eligible? We hadn't gotten to the conclusion because 48 hours later, the state came out with basically what we did the night before. So as written, A, we're not even close with the people who are eligible. B, if we have to count sixth grade, then this building is not going to be eligible for a mask until after 12 and under are eligible to be vaccinated, because we would need, back of the napkin, we would need about a 95% vaccination rate of students and staff in grades seven to 12 in order to compensate for the fact that we have zero in sixth grade to get to the whole building being at 80. So that, so for anybody who may, in the public who may not have signed a consent form, or thinks, or doesn't know, and hasn't put in, sent in vaccination information, please do that. do that. For individuals who, other students not vaccinated, please reconsider or consider, or just know that, you know, we, unless the state lifts this mandate, we're, and we're probably not going to be, we're not going to be the only ones, but there is a compounding issue potentially with this building that other high schools won't have. Middle schools will all be in the same boat, you know, with the exception of Needham, who has a sixth grade school all by itself, where its middle school is only seventh and eighth grade. But the vast majority of middle schools are sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So, you know, it's really going to be, anybody who is eligible, it's going to be the high school only, and we're not, we're not even at the 80% yet.
One of the things that they talked about too was getting a vaccination clinic or in the town. And so if you haven't been vaccinated yet and are interested in doing that, check the, your emails because we'll be, we got a good turnout or good information back from the poll that Bob had sent out. And so they're going to be setting that up sometime in the next couple of weeks, probably on the weekend in the Clyde Brown cafeteria is what they're thinking.
Right.
But there's no date set yet.
No date set yet. And Sarah Ward, the public health nurse, would be setting, will be setting up that date. The survey did yield pretty good responses of people who would be interested in that vaccine clinic, so. And hopefully with, with, you know, the state's target, it might, you know, convince a few more people to get their students vaccinated.
And then the other piece of news that came out today that we talked about briefly, and we'll have to see how things unfold, the MIAA Board of Directors voted today to strongly recommend that winter athletes be vaccinated. The basis for that is their concern, or the concern raised was when the winter sports teams get to playoffs, they often use venues that are places such as the TD Garden or college gyms, especially for the basketball playoffs. Some of those facilities, the TD Garden being one, is vaccination required in order to get into the building. So it could potentially set up a situation where individual athletes or teams would not be able to play in the playoffs if they were to play at a venue that required vaccination. Obviously, this came out this morning with our high schools at, in the 60% range. 85% of our kids in the middle school play sports. It's something that, you know, needs to be considered. Mr. Malaney is going to talk with Mr. Grant and hopefully connect with the Tri-Valley League as a whole to figure out what this would mean. And also, you know, again, we're in a weird situation where how we, how we're going to handle it for winter sports if, you know, if this building still has to be mask, full mask, yet when they go play at Med Bay or Medfield, if those high schools are, like, there's just a, a lot of questions that'll get raised about consistency of approach and how we handle it. But again, the MIA is coming out and, you know, they, I don't believe they legally can mandate anything, so they're taking the governor's approach of strongly recommend is the farthest I can go. And they're strongly recommending that in order for an athlete to play winter sports, they be vaccinated, which is what the private, the ISL Independent School League, which is what a lot of the private schools around here already implemented for the fall.
And I'd also say that, you know, the, when it comes to quarantining and things, when, when there are close contacts in school, a vaccinated student is exempt from quarantining. And, you know, we've had.
Non-symptomatic.
Right, asymptomatic, thank you. The, you know, we've had instances, we've had a few cases, positive cases in school here, and we've had a number of kids who were close contact, but they were exempt because they were asymptomatic and they were vaccinated.
Thanks for the update. Thanks for covering the meeting.
Yeah.
I think the only other thing that they said was that we had very low COVID rates this week and are trending down, the town itself. And that was one of the things that she wanted, I don't know if we said this already.
Right.
And part of the, as, also on top of the 80%, the Board of Health would like to see the town trending down for several weeks in terms of cases in the town instead of just that 80% threshold for the school. And they were going to write something up for us about.
We asked them to, if they wanted something other than 80, or if they suggested something other than 80% that we get, that the Board of Health formally write, what that would look like.
Right, how many weeks downward trend do they want? Is there a threshold percentage of cases that they feel comfortable with that, for unmasking, as well as the 80% vaccination rate in the school? And Lynn and Diane reported low cases or one, no cases or one, I don't know, do you remember?
Yeah, it's, we have, I think we have one positive finishing up at Clyde Brown. And I think we're all set at the middle high school right now. We have a couple of kids who are close contacts. But so far this week, it's been, it's been.
Columbus Day is coming up. So that's Columbus Day, then followed up by Halloween, so that's one day at a time, one week at a time. One health and safety committee meeting at a time.
So this was a good week.
In the, right, right. The data that's, that's out there on the DESE website and the other state websites is familius, is from September 5th through the 18th, so it's not exactly up to the minute data.
Do we have anything else? Is there any correspondence for old business or new business?
I have, for the superintendent's report, I just have.
Superintendent, sorry, I was skipping over things. Superintendent's report, it's your turn now.
Yeah, so just, just to kind of update people on, on what had happened last Friday, which was, we had a, there was a computer glitch that resulted in every parent of every student in Clyde Brown and in the middle school getting a notification that their child was not in school. And obviously, this was a major concern for people. I got a text from Robin right away, which was good because I could check in with Jane Liotta.
It's like, Bob, my kids, my kids are in school.
And, and, you know, it's, fortunately, we can look back and say, okay, it was okay. But there were a lot, you know, those first moments when you get that call that, my kid's not in school, but I left her at the bus stop, you know, it just gives you chills. So fortunately, people let us know right away, and we found out what had happened. And so the offices at the elementary school and the middle school were fielding all kinds of phone calls. There were some people who, you know, came right to Clyde Brown School, and Tana was out front letting people know that. So, you know, what we found out was that the way our attendance system is supposed to work is Power School, our student information system, sends a message to School Messenger, which is our communication software, of who's absent and hasn't been called in by a parent. And then the robo calls go out. Well, there was an issue on Friday where there was a script error, and Dave could explain this better than I can, but what School Messenger, there was a script error in School Messenger's protocols, and it wound up just taking every name of every contact in the elementary school and in the middle school. The high school had already started sending robo calls out earlier this week, so it was unaffected because Clyde Brown and the middle school weren't turning on until later in October. So School Messenger went into Clyde Brown, took every parent, went into the middle school, took every parent, and just blasted it out. The error was, was found, the source of the error was found on Friday. It was rectified by School Messenger. And Monday and Tuesday, we didn't have robo calls going out to everyone in the district. So, you know, I'd like to apologize for that instance, and I'd also like to thank people for their understanding. You know, there were a number of people who were very appreciative with the steps that the middle school and the elementary school took to try and get the word out as fast as possible.
What, what time did the message go out?
The message went out about nine, I know, about nine o'clock.
Between 9:30 and 10:00.
Yeah, yeah. Which is, the school sets up when its messages will go out, but Clyde Brown and the middle school hadn't even set up the program yet.
So I'm doing a timeline here because I see the email traffic that you guys sent, and that at 11, 10:55, you sent a correction.
Right.
Here, here's my only thought is, when did you know that it was a problem? Meaning, it was probably fairly quick.
Yeah, it was, right. And so what happened was, and going back to communication, what happened was School Messenger, for some reason, wasn't working in the elementary school to send out a blast that says that phone call you got doesn't.
But I would have gone to the list serves. I would have gone to the list serves for the schools, which I know is, not everyone has signed up.
Right, but now the list serves are through School Messenger.
Oh, they're all.
Yeah, yeah. So what happened was before those list serves, before the messages, emails went out, individual teachers at Clyde Brown emailed every parent.
Oh, so we, okay, so they were connected. So there was no way to get.
Right, right.
The lines were busy.
Yeah.
Parents couldn't call.
I'm not talking about the calling. I'm talking, because calling is inefficient, if people can call.
Right, and they, and they weren't picking up phone.
Do we have to think about a redundant, not a full system, but even if it's a list, a rudimentary list of, you take the emails out of School Messenger and you put them in Excel. So it's a break the glass in an emergency, because if Messenger goes down again, we've lost the ability to use Messenger. And it wouldn't be perfect because emails change, but even if you did it once a week and you dumped the email and you kept that sheet, you'd have the ability to, someone could cut and paste into Gmail and say, we're, there's a problem, we're working on it, more information to follow. Get that out as soon as possible. Do your forensic audit kind of of what's going on, and then you can do a more detailed kind of explanation. You could have taken away, and it's obviously very easy to do this, post incident.
Right, well, that's, we learned from it.
No, but, but I, I've dealt with some communication issues at a very large school on a river, and we've made mistakes. So most of my helpful suggestions are because I've screwed up for.
It's the wisdom of experience.
For tens of thousands of people. And, and actually, we had a, we just had an issue two weekends ago, there was a violent crime, and we were putting out a notice, and the system that goes to 90,000 people didn't work. It broke. And it was a Sunday afternoon, and people were scrambling. And so there were many conversations, and we're building a rudimentary list. So even at, even at our place, we have to do it. So, but like I said, very easy to say, I think you got to it quick enough, but if that's, if, if it's all in one, in one system, that potentially could happen again. And I would.
Yeah, I'd agree. And Jen Starr and I are meeting tomorrow, we have a weekly meeting, but, you know, kind of an after action.
And it wouldn't be perfect, but at least you could get it out. And then what would happen, even if people weren't on that list, at least they're getting it. And then friend groups are then texting each other, saying.
Right.
Just so you know, something screwed up. And so before you know it, you could get that organically out as well.
I agree. And I, and I would like to compliment the fast thinking on behalf of the middle school and the elementary school, because the elementary school, every teacher was, was told, okay, right now, stop everything, send an email home to all the parents in the classroom. Mr. Glenn upstairs in the middle school went on the announcement, told every kid, all right, you have my permission. Everyone take out your phone.
They did.
Call your parents, text your parents that you are in school and that. So that was, you know, the quick way, but I agree, and that's something we're definitely looking at. The time between, we could get another blast out.
Plan for the worst, hope for the best.
Yep, yep. So, so again.
Let the record show, I did say something positive about Mr. Malaney twice, so there was. Write that in his notes.
And then on another tech note, on a more positive tech note, that we are planning a cyber safety night for parents on Zoom on October 21st at 7:00 PM. So people can be on the lookout for a notice involving that, that tech safety night, cyber safety night. We'll be sending something out on that shortly. So it's October 21st at 7:00.
Good?
Yep.
All right. Terry, do you want to come and chat about something? Come on up.
So I think I made a few packets that didn't make the agenda necessarily, which is why we're doing it on your new business.
Oh, yeah.
We have two purchases that are over $5,000 that we'd like you to consider. The first is a purchase of $9,950 to replace the air conditioning for the second floor computer lab in this, in this building. It's basically a split unit. I'm sure you've seen them in offices, maybe even have experienced them in your own locations. It's a Mitsubishi split, quite common. That one has failed, and in a computer lab, it's about the only place where it's required to have air conditioning. The second is a purchase of just over $5,000, it's $5,750. And this is at Clyde Brown School. And I guess the good news, or the bad news, is that it was not able to be discovered when the project was still open because, as you know, a little over six months after the project was completed and we were in the school, we were then out of the school. And then, once we were starting to bring kids back in, we boosted the HVAC system, which exposed a venting situation in one small area. So this 5750 is going to repair that venting problem. The project is no longer open, so we can't go back to the project for funding for this, but it's a relatively small fix. So we would ask to approve both of those purchases. And I believe both of them are in your package. The vendor is the same for both.
Mr. Taylor.
I make a motion to approve the Director of Finance and Human Resources to enter into an agreement with Control Point Mechanical for two projects. One, the second floor computer lab split system in the middle school, high school, in the amount, no more than up to $10,000.
Can we make that one $9,999?
You want it exactly.
I want to make it $1 under $10,000.
Oh, $9,000, up to $9,999.
Thank you.
$9,999.
$10,000 has a magical meaning.
Okay, I was just giving you a little buffer. And then the second project, the Clyde Brown duct repairs, in the amount of up to $5,999, a couple extra hundred bucks.
Second, it's been moved in seconded for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. And it doesn't look like we have executive session, right?
Madam Chair, there's also a note, I don't know if you guys saw it.
Yeah, this is a.
There's a note for the use of the bandstand.
Okay.
For, on October 30th, I think there's going to be a musician, there's also going to be, the Girl Scouts are going to have pumpkin night.
Okay.
So I think because it's on our property, they're looking for permission to. So I think because it's on our property, they're looking for permission to use the bandstand. I don't know if we want to do it tonight or if you want to add it to the agenda. I have no issue with this request.
That's fine, I don't see it in the, but sure. It's in the folder, but I couldn't open it.
I don't know if
Yeah, the town hall usage file.
Sometimes technology doesn't work and good old paper does.
Could you read it to us, Mr. Powell?
It's an email.
Would you mind?
Read it to us.
I will summarize, sure. Sure, let me look at my piece of paper here.
Any of my cheaters?
Ms. Elaine, Ms. Elaine, who is Elaine Kessler, will lead a sing-along from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. And because they need to use the bandstand because it has electricity. So she needs to plug in her mic. And then there's a question about lighting, which I don't think they've just figured out the lighting piece. But because the bandstand is now on school property, they're seeking our permission to use it. So Ms. Kessler will be playing from 7:00 to 8:00.
When?
Oh, I'm sorry, October 30th.
Okay.
The day before Halloween, with a rain date of Friday, the 29th. And then there will be, it's the Fairy House event for Girl Scouts. Huh?
The rainy days before the event?
So they're gonna predict the rain.
If you know what's gonna rain on Saturday.
Saturday, they're gonna move it out.
I'm just, I'm just reading my piece of paper, Mark, if you want to, if you want to micromanage this request, feel free. This is a Girl Scout request, someone's against them. So it's October with pumpkins. That's it.
All right. Do we need to make a motion to allow them to do it, or?
I will.
Okay.
Because I'm supportive of this event. I make a motion to, to approve the use of the bandstand on either Friday, October 29th, or Saturday, October 30th for the Girl Scout event. And electricity will be used on the bandstand.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded for the discussion?
All I would say is for the public watching, Ms. Elaine is fantastic. So I highly recommend going with your young or medium-aged children, they would love it.
Medium-aged children. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Did Mark vote?
He did.
Okay, I couldn't hear you, I just wanted to make sure we knew.
All right, and that looks like we are all done. It doesn't look like we have executives.
Does that motion to adjourn?
I don't believe so.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, any further discussion for the adjournment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and we will see you on October 5th, it's our next weekly.